I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for ten twenty-one twenty-one.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for-
Motion carries.
-four twenty-one.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Continued hearing Long Bill Homes. Another continued hearing. Comprehensive Conservation subdivision.
Can we go back to Long Bill Homes? Um, the- The peer review?
Yes, for the continuance.
Yeah, but they asked for more money too. NCH asked for more money.
Who's? Who asked for more money?
Hunter's- This is Hunter's Hill?
Is that the contractor?
No, it's our peer review service. NCH, is this Hunter's Hill you just continued?
Long Bill Homes.
Okay, yes. We got an email from the engineering firm that we hired for peer review and they need more money.
Okay.
So you guys have to vote on that.
What do they have now?
They have started with five thousand.
And what do they think they're gonna be?
Five thousand, the work was in the hat. Three thousand dollar bill, but we have to vote approved tonight.
Right, but they're looking for, it says, hi Lisa, just looking, this is from Steve, Steven Vintreska, the P E with NCH. Hi Lisa, just looking at our accounting for Hunter's Hill and it looks like we are close to our five thousand dollar limit for the project. NCH estimates an additional five to eight thousand dollars to complete the drainage review given the size of this project. Let me know if you would like to discuss or need anything in addition to this request. So, in order for them to complete the review, they need more money.
How much more work do they have?
A lot.
Yeah, a lot.
Right. They're just on the ground level?
Hunter's Hill is modifying the subdivision based on our requirements.
Right.
So, our review company needs more money to review it.
Okay, alright, fine.
Well, let's go for the larger amount then.
Yeah.
Because if, if, if they don't need it, they're gonna, you know, the company will get their money back.
Right, it'll be refunded, so yeah, let's start with the eight thousand.
Okay, now, we don't have to have a special vote on that, we're just going to tell Long Bill-
Yeah, you have to have a vote, right?
Have a vote.
Yep.
If we're gonna increase the fifty-three G account, we need to vote on it.
Do we have to go, do we have to go up that much already?
Well, rather than coming back and maybe asking for more money on a second, on a third occasion-
Okay.
We'll just do it and then what is not spent is gonna be returned to them automatically.
The money, just so you know, Daniel, the money is paid by the applicant-
Okay.
-by the developer.
I see.
And then it goes into an account and this account then pays our peer review. Okay, I'll make a motion then that we request eight thousand additional dollars for the fifty-three G account for Hunter's Hill.
Eight thousand.
Eight.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Comprehensive Conservation subdivision.
It's Forest Hills.
What was that, Lisa?
That one's Forest Hills.
Forest Hills?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, it's continued, huh?
Continue the hearing too.
Okay, we need a motion to continue it?
Continue to December sixteenth.
Motion made.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Was there a motion made to continue the Hunter's Hill?
Yes.
Okay.
Reed Brothers Farm Liability Partnership.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until January twentieth, two thousand twenty-two?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New hearing, notice of intent, request Ross Boselal. Where is he?
Bob.
That's Bob?
Yeah.
I didn't recognize him.
So, this is a notice- This is a notice of intent from Ross Bosely, am I pronouncing?
Boizel.
Boizel. One seventy Beach Street, Dyton, zero two seven one five, to replace an existing failed septic system in accordance with Title V regulations and remove and replace an existing garage as well as a new driveway and associated grading. All work is within the riverfront area and bordering land subject to flooding.
Charlie gets-
Charlie. Yep, yep. Hey, I'm right here.
Good man. That's 'cause Kim got it all straightened out for me.
Takes a woman, right?
Yep. Okay, I'll set the start. As Lisa said, Bob Barabee, pro-engineering, representing Ross, who's in the audience. He's in an existing two-bedroom dwelling on the lot, house is at one seventy beach, it's on the corner of Beach and Park Avenue. Across the street on Park is the Totten River. The area is inland, subject to coastal flooding. The elevation, based on mean sea level, is about seven through that piece of property. The flood zone for that area is A E fifteen, so this lot is about eight feet below the flood elevation. Like I said, it was an existing dwelling. He needs a new septic system, a septic system that was probably installed there, there was a cesspool in the front. Years later, they put in a system on the side of the property. Both of those systems were probably placed in the groundwater table. So, under today's standards, we have to maintain separation to high groundwater. So, to do that, we have to put in a tank, a new fifteen hundred gallon tank, thousand gallon pump chamber, and then pump it up to a field. If you're familiar with the area, there was a dwelling across the street on Beach, their system is similar, there's a mound in the yard. So, we're putting this up in the front of the property at the corner of Park and at Beach, maintaining a ten feet of separation that is required to the property lawn. So, the tank and the pump chamber will be below ground, just with the covers on top, but the field will be mounded. So, we're filing first of all for that, the septic system replacement, existing two-bedroom, it's gonna handle the two-bedroom, we're not increasing the flow. He's also got a garage in the back corner, northwest corner of the property. He would like to take that down because it is pretty much beyond repair and replace it with a new garage, same size, so same footprint. It's a little skewed on the property, he might make it a little more parallel and perpendicular to the street, but it will be the same size and generally in the same location that is there. He's got a little gravel driveway going to it, so he's proposing to fix that driveway when he puts the new garage in. And so, what we're asking for also is some associated grading, he's not gonna build his whole lot up, but he does have some areas, like if you look at my contour line, the seven comes around the back of the property and then heads out towards Park.
We don't have a mound, Bob.
Oh, you don't have the plans?
No.
Okay, I can move the boxes.
I can give you Mike, I have an-
Yeah, give us a, let Lisa.
Okay.
Now, when you say he's not gonna raise the lot, he's got to raise the, he's gotta raise the area where the septic is going.
Yep, the system will be there, and that's the Title V requirement.
Yep.
So, how many feet out of the ground is that thing gonna be?
Okay, can you speed over?
By finished, we're going point one, and the existing grade right now is between six and a half to seven, so it's gonna end up being about three feet-
Okay.
...out of the ground where it's all set up, and that includes a foot of fill that has to go over the top of the leaching field. And by doing that, it'll give me the separation that's required by Title V.
Did you hear right?
Yes.
I ask for a waiver on separation from four feet to three feet, which they do grant to Title V on a repair. If this was new construction or if we were adding bedrooms to the house, then we wouldn't be able to indulge in those variances.
I have a question about the sequencing. Um, do you propose to do the septic system first?
Oh, that would be made for Ross. If you're gonna go with the septic first, you're gonna try and do all this at one time, like the garage first, what are you thinking?
I'd probably do the garage.
It's vacant right now.
So, retaining wall, when will that be done?
That's gonna be probably done when the garage is done.
So, last?
Yeah, yeah. And we're not expecting much, you're thinking maybe a foot or something, it's just to get-
I don't think it was that much.
Yeah, maybe not. So, it's just like something to delineate his property and then just so he keeps his grading on his side of the property.
So, 'cause what I'm getting at is, I would like to see erosion controls around the limit of the project. And then-
Yeah, I was looking for that on the, on your map, Bob, I didn't see any.
Is, is the house being lived in now?
No, it's vacant, vacant right now.
Okay, so there's no rushing getting the septic done? Okay, alright.
I think I only have a note, June next year.
No, but what I'm saying is, is you don't have to have it done within two weeks or three weeks, you got, you know, you'll get your garage started and then you can work on the rest.
We'll ask for public input when, when we're done, okay? So, are you proposing any green, like, are you planting anything over here or no?
I don't, I can't, I don't know where you're really pointing to.
Are you planting anything on the lot at all, like, besides grass? No?
I mean, maybe eventually I'll plant like shrubs or something like, do I have-
It's too early.
-anything like trees or anything? Like with the original plan, I was just planning on having a stone driveway coming through the back.
Gravel?
Yes.
Okay.
Stone, gravel.
Alright, great.
And then whatever, like whatever obviously I need to plant grass over this, that could be all of the rest of it. Would this be grass?
And you don't need to remove any shrubs or anything to put, remove the garage and replace it, it's pretty much?
Yeah, it's pretty vacant, if there's anything there, it's probably your stuff that's, that's grown, like something that's just invaded the area, nothing, there's nothing that, that I don't think- There's no like trees on the ground.
Okay.
Well, there is a couple of dead trees in the park. But I don't think that, and I'm not even sure if that's even on the property. And it does not subject to what we're talking about.
Well, it is, the whole site falls within the riverfront for us, so the whole site is jurisdictional, right?
Yes.
So, the two-hundred-foot riverfront goes beyond your property, so your entire lot is jurisdictional for us.
And it's all in the flood zone.
And it's all in the flood zone, so.
Is the house, it's not built up?
It's not built up, no, it's just got a crawl space under it, there's no basement.
Yeah.
Just a crawl space, and even the plumbing that's there is, we're gonna come in, keep the crawl space and then bring a new pipe in from the house, so all the plumbing will be totally be done from the house to the septic system.
So, any modifications on the house is gonna come later?
Yeah, yeah, they can come later on. It's not, most of, I don't think you have any structure, and you're not gonna expand the house, it's gonna be more interior, right? Yeah, I don't, I'm not even sure I have the option to expand the house. It's gonna, it'll be the same. I have no plans to make it- But he needs a roof that'll get his roofing-
Yeah, well, that's sort of, that'd be internal, roughly speaking.
Yeah, yeah, he's no additions. No additions proposed. He's gonna stick with the two bedrooms under there now.
So, we are still waiting for a D E P file number? So, this will have to be continued in any case, so in the meantime, if Bob can put the erosion controls as the limit of disturbance and then maybe just put a sequence of-
Okay.
-timing as far as what's gonna happen and what order?
Okay.
Great.
Public input. Public input. Jack?
I'm well set, well.
Daniel?
No.
Charlie?
Give him a poke.
Charlie?
You have any questions? You have any questions for him?
Does somebody want to ask a question?
Yeah, we have public input.
Hi, Tom Rose from Park Avenue, just concerned how the new septic will affect the flooding that already exists, the area of it. It already, it's a pretty bad area of flooding.
There's the guy to ask right there.
Okay, it will. Any water that's falling into his property now, because I didn't know who asked the question, but, okay. But as the property is now, it's almost like a bowl in his front yard, so the septic system is going in there, so there will be a volume of any water that's in there that will be taken up by the leaching field, but there's nothing that we can do without, we have to follow the laws on the septic system. So, it will take up some of that area and then volume, so the water that's there, like if his yard fills up and it runs off, it will keep running off wherever it's running off of his property, 'cause we're not changing the direction of where the flow goes now.
I'm concerned because the town, in fact, in the May meeting that was in, the drain basin at Pleasant and Beach Street, and then it's supposed to stop in July.
It started at this committee, and it was like approved, I assume, and it never happened, so I, without that in place, I'm worried about how this is gonna affect other houses in the neighborhood.
As far as I know, the D P W still plans on proceeding with that, it's just, there's other priorities in town right now.
And will that-
And he has three years to complete it as far as we're concerned.
And that will relieve the issue you feel?
Well, I don't, they, they weren't sure, nobody's really sure, right? It's, it's our best, you know, put forward to try.
This probably might not be the right place, but that seems to be a health issue there. In fact, the committee here addressed it as a health issue, there's this stagnant water, there's a lot of birds in there, it's just like, you know, we've got Tripoli and West Nile, it's like a breeding ground for mosquitoes and, I mean, that's-
So, that's the adjacent property, that's-
I spoke with Ross.
So, so Ross's property, this is an improvement in that, you're eliminating a cesspool and you're replacing it with a new system with treatment, you know what I mean? So, right now, he doesn't have any of that, it's just a hole in the ground.
I think Ross is gonna be a great neighbor, but I don't want to, like at other meetings, the building inspector mentioned that certain people not, might not be able to live in their houses if the water continues to rise. I know Mr. Aggie also said that at one meeting, and of course, I wanna live in my house, you know, I love it there.
Well, we can't deny him the option of redeveloping his site. If he was coming in with a new septic on a lot that didn't already have one, it would be a different scenario, you know what I mean?
I honestly don't want to deny him, I think he's awesome, but I'd also-
We are looking at, you know, with climate change and sea level change and rise.
I don't think it's a climate change issue, to be honest, I think anybody that's lived in the neighborhood knows what went on, but I'm not gonna bring that up.
I don't think it's a climate change.
No, it wasn't a climate-
Well, in any case, what I'm saying is, years down the road-
Yes.
-things might change here, and everything along the coast is gonna change, if you look at, you know, maps. So, time will tell, but in this case, this is all we have here right now to discuss is this lot.
Susan Burrows, Park Ave. Could you further allude to your question about shrubbery, i.e. trees, the implanted and/or cut down? I know it's a two-hundred-foot reference point and all that, but what was your reference to saying, asking him if he could plant or not plant or if he's cutting trees?
With the retaining wall being put in, I don't know if he's gonna have to take any vegetation out to do that.
So, what would be the concern if he was?
Um, well, I wanna definitely have erosion controls there.
Yeah, we all would love that, unfortunately, that is what part of the problem is, that vegetation has been removed, not on his property.
Oh, yeah.
So, this is part of the water issue, and I know there are other people here, whether they choose to speak or not, that is a major, major concern why this certain property has flooded.
There is some like small white, white oats that would be where the wall would be, and I could leave them there and put the one-foot wall on the inside of them, they're, I mean, to be honest with you, they're not gonna live anyhow. Any vegetation that's on that line is in horrible shape, if not totally dead.
Yeah, I mean, I just would like to see some, you know, maybe not trees, 'cause you are putting a wall, and I know you don't wanna put a tree right next to a wall, but some, something to-
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a holt dealer at all, I just, to be honest with you, I don't know, I'm not, I don't think I'm educated enough in the field of shrubbery to know what to plant long after the septic-
Yeah, well, we can help you with that.
Entertaining, actually?
Yeah.
Excuse me, so if the flooding got worse, what recourse would we have, that there's no recourse for us?
If the flooding got worse 'cause of his project?
Yeah.
Lisa, why do you want to talk?
Are we talking? Sorry.
Hi, Nicole Allen, one ninety-nine Beach Street, I'm directly across from Ross, and Ross is gonna be a great neighbor and I'm not recording Ross.
Can you come up here and speak up because they can't hear you, I'm sorry.
So, hi. I'm Nicole Allen, one ninety-nine Beach Street, I'm directly across from Ross. My concern, again with the flooding, I have no problems with Ross doing the septic, my concern is the flooding. When the hump goes up, is it gonna divert the water directly across the street to my house? I, I don't have problems with flooding, when we built our home, you guys would not let us put any fill in our yard, so our, our yard is what it is. So, if that gets diverted to our yard, that's gonna be a big issue. So, I just wanna make sure that there's no flooding issues, that something doesn't happen to my property that I didn't have an issue with before that may now.
Bob, what is the square footage of this mound?
The surface, and it's three foot high.
Yeah, the field, the field's twenty-five feet, about ten feet.
You know, two hundred fifty square feet.
It has an overdig, so it's five feet. It tapers down from the field, 'cause I put a poly barrier around the field so I can, like, condense the size of the mound.
Yeah.
Once I put that around on that five-foot overdig, then I can just slope it down to three or four, which is more plausible. So, the total rectangle square footage is actually five feet all around it, so it'd be about twenty feet wide by thirty-five feet.
This, the system, would it also absorb rainwater, not just septic?
It would to an extent, because being up in the air, it's gonna always be dry, whereas the ground below, if it was saturated, then it wouldn't take in any additional water. So, by being up with a lawn over it, it will absorb water when it initially rains, if you get a-
But at a lesser degree than if it wasn't there?
Yeah.
So, you're, so if you're talking two hundred fifty square feet and you might be talking two hundred fifty cubic feet of water, which would-
Yeah.
I don't know how much that really is to disperse, but-
If it's a foot high, like, in this particular site, the grades, like, your property's across the street-
Mine's right, right here.
Okay, so we shot-
Right across, right close to that.
Yeah, we shot elevations, mainly, we shot them on this entire piece of property, but when we were out there with Todd, he asked us to get a grade on your system, just to see how it was gonna be relevant to yours.
Yeah.
And so, when we shot that, the elevation of yours is about ten feet, where this was gonna be about nine, so because it was a repair and I had more leniency being closer to the water table, it'll be about a foot lower than the top of your system, but your system is like the highest part of your land.
That's, that's what I'm saying, our land comes down and then the street goes up.
But-
I don't wanna have a pond in my yard.
Well, would hap-
'Cause I haven't.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And from this project, you won't, because the grade, unfortunately, out here, what's happened is over the years, as the roads get built up-
Yeah, they get built up, the property goes down.
-the property stay the same, so all the water just runs off the roads to the interior lots.
And it's all, it's all flood zone.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's all-
Well, when we built our house ten years ago, we weren't allowed to bring in fill, we weren't allowed to build up anything, so we would have that pocket there.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? So, I don't want an issue caused that we can't prevent.
Yeah, he's still gonna have that, 'cause he's not proposing to build up his whole site. The grade, what I was getting at, on Beach Street is actually eight up, it goes from eight up.
Okay.
Park Avenue, the grades there are around seven, so the worst-case scenario is the water, if this did fill up to a point where it overflowed, it's gonna go to the Totten River, yeah. And there is some vacant land in between there, it's almost like an access, and that is pretty much the low area, right?
It's a beach.
Last year, the whole entire area did overflow, and eventually it went directly across the street into the, the landing, the con area, and that was the lowest point, that's where the water eventually spilled. So, as long as the corner of my property stays low from where the water is coming into my property, and that water can escape across Park Ave, it's not gonna go in front of these people's house, because if, if I prevent that flow to go across Park Ave, that water literally has nowhere to go but into their houses, and I, I mean, I've already expressed concern about that with everyone at a park. So, right now, the lowest point in the area that goes across into the landing, so as long as that doesn't change, any displacement is gonna push water over Park Ave into the river.
Okay, Bob, if I'm reading this correctly, a heavy rain is gonna wash out into the river because of the elevation. The only thing that it can't take is an extreme tidal backup, as in a hurricane or something like that, then the whole area is gonna get underwater.
The flood, if we get, and when I lived on the bottom of Hart Street, we got some heavy rain at one time and the water came up, there's a little house, if you're familiar with it, at the end of Hart and Pleasant, the people were in there, that house, I got pictures where that house is like it's floating, it was completely surrounded by water, and the highway department kept moving rocks up the driveway as the water level kept coming up, and then it finally got to a point, it almost made it to Pleasant Street, and so that's, it's, it's tough, but, but that would be something that would not be affected by stormwater, that would be more of a-
Title backup.
Yeah, that, that would do it, yeah.
So, just so everybody knows, we're not closing this hearing- So just so everybody knows, we're not closing this hearing tonight. There is... I've requested some additional information, and DEP has not issued a file number for this project, so it's gonna be continued, if... but we can still discuss.
If somebody can just move over up to the river, then that would alleviate this problem and everybody else's.
I don't think that's a town roadway. I mean, isn't it up to the homeowners?
Well, you don't want that more than homeowners would. The adjacent field, which is filled with a large amount of animal feces, does run into the river. And I'm all for Ross too, but the fact we're concerned about that water running in the river, but we're not, seem to be overly concerned with the overflow of this contaminated water running into the protection of the Totten River. And it's nice and clean now, and we have protected it. And we're concerned about the 200-foot trees and shrubbery and et cetera, which we absolutely should be and continue to be. But I don't wanna see contaminated water that's with animal feces going into the river. That's my personal feeling.
This is where we're on this...
But this can potentially affect the runoff of the water in the adjacent property. I think this is, it's not... that's not just the only issue. Is rainwater is one thing. Contaminated water filled with animal feces running into the river on a heavy rain. If, if the rainwater from his system were concerned, we should be concerned also about this other area that gets flooded and goes into the Totten.
I recommend you write a letter to the Border Health. That's the Border Health Department, not Conservation.
I think they've down there already, yeah, I don't think anything's been done.
Ma'am, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
They were supposed to put that drain basin in, starting in July. It was all marked off. And now you're saying they have three years, is it?
Well, the permit that we issued is good for three years.
So why did they delay? Because it was all marked off, they came down and marked the water, they marked all that.
I don't know, you can check with Mr. Ferry at the Department of Public Works.
They contaminated everything he could, whatever that means. I don't know what that means.
I don't know. It's not my department.
I know. I mean, we've all reached out, and we don't usually get anywhere, that's the problem.
Okay, we're gonna continue it until 12/16?
And Bob's gonna make a few changes.
Okay, yeah, okay. So I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing to 12/16 for additional information from Mr. Burrowby, and also a DEP file number.
All seconded up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Bob. Stick around, you're on there again. Yep, you're not next.
Notice of intent, note of... A notice of intent request from Simon's Construction.
Oh, yeah, that is new, I guess. So, yeah.
Do you want this back, since you're gonna, you're gonna give us new ones?
Yeah, okay, I'll take it, Bob.
So this, this one, no, I'll just jump in. Uh, this notice of intent, we really can't discuss or anything, because I brought to Bob's office's attention that the abutters in Somerset weren't notified. So we can open this hearing, because we posted in the newspaper we would, but we need to continue it right away until December 16th.
Well, let's just open it and continue it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, you opened it, I'll continue it. Uh, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing of Simon's Construction to December 16th due to lack of proper abutter notification.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Cal Rabello.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. So these are for 170 Beach?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lisa has prepared an extension?
Uh, no, actually Charlie, Charlie did, but...
Okay, you're requesting an extension for...
Yeah, uh, the wetland delineation at Zero Milk Street?
So Zero Milk Street, you guys issued an extension a year ago, and he's looking for a new extension.
I think, do I fall into the 15-month? Because of the whole COVID thing?
Yeah, you do, you do anyway, yeah.
Okay, so this is just a request for an extension?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we extend his ORAD to 11/18/22.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Bob.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Cal.
Okay.
So, um, they're gonna, you're gonna sign it tonight?
Yeah.
All right, and then I need to make copies, so swing back. Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sit down, Jim. 2732 Park Street. A complaint received for the foundation built in a buffer zone without a valid permit.
So that, yeah, Charlie and I went out there. And we found there's a foundation being built, if not in the wetlands, adjacent to the wetland. I issued an enforcement order, and we visited the site and explained to the property owner what they needed to do. Since then, I believe they have, um, they have hired pro-line engineering.
Yeah, he has an official hire list, and I did talk to Frank, and I told him we would help him with the project. I also spoke to Jimmy Agia, Building Department, about what would... My opinion, I'm not biased, but I went out, took a bunch of pictures. And I think it's similar to what we just talked about on Beach, where Cherry Street Park and the boat ramp road going down, similar situation where the roads are built, and then the properties are lower inside the roads. And what I saw on this particular property, because we did a septic repair for him probably 15 years ago, and across the street for his two dwellings on the Totten River. We pumped it across the street, put the field in there. He's proposing to build this, like a garage on a slab, just like a prefab thing. And I saw a lot of uplayed trees on the north side and then on the east side towards the Totten River, but in the back, there's standing water, not too far from where his slab is. So I think everything around that area all drains to that corner. I couldn't tell, because it did bring in some gravel where the slab was put, so I can tell if he did work in the wetlands. I did speak to Brandon. Brandon has a very keen, yeah, Brandon's a fan of ecosystem solutions, but I think he would probably hire him to go out there, do some soil borrowings, and then probably delineate the wetland area. Brandon feels, Jimmy Agia, I spoke to him, thinks that it could be considered isolated land, subject to flooding, which it could be. And at that point, we have to determine if it's jurisdictional or not, based on how much water it actually holds before it overtops and then leaves the area.
Just, just for the record, though, jurisdictional as far as Wetlands Protection Act, it is jurisdictional as far as conservation if it's isolated, because in our bylaw, we cover isolated wetlands.
Yes.
So they're gonna have to file. I mean, the question is, do we wanna issue a deadline? And we also need to vote, because I issued the enforcement order on my own. You guys need to ratify that by voting to approve the enforcement order. And let me dig it out. So it was issued on October 12th by me. So you guys have to vote.
I need to vote for Simon's.
Okay, I'll make the motion that, that we ratify the enforcement order that Lisa sent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Send that along, and we'll sign it.
Um, do we have a date when they have to file the...
I, did I put a date in there? I mean, that's, that's definitely a good idea. We need to give these people deadlines.
Well, with the enforcement order on it, he can't do anything unless, until he comes in. So you really don't need a, a date on it.
Well, a date, well, a date as to when we wanna see a notice of intent or an RDA.
He'll be along shortly. Zero Hart Street, map 19 lot 1.
Okay. I, unfortunately, we haven't gotten anywhere with two letters that have been sent out. I sent one out on October 14th and one on October 21st. Um, therefore, and they were both sent certified. We haven't gotten anywhere, so I have an enforcement order right here for you guys to sign.
And who is the property owner?
Malcolm F. Codore, Codier, Jr., and Leah A. Codier, 94 Pond Street, Swansea, Mass. Um, the address is Zero Hart, map 19 lot 1. Extent and type of activity, on October 14th, 2021. Through direct observation made of the property, it was found that there are wetland impacts resulting from clearing and cutting of vegetation within the wetland resources and 100-foot buffer zone of freshwater wetlands to be in violation of 310 CMR, Section 10.02, Section 1 and 2, and a violation of the Conservation Commission bylaw. The commission is issuing this enforcement order under 310 CMR. 10.08 enforcement orders of the Wetlands Protection Act. The activity resulting in the alteration of wetlands resources and buffer zone are the following: cutting and removal of vegetation without authorization from the Diet and Conservation Commission for alterations to the wetland. It's zero to 25-foot no-disturb area, and it's zero to 50-foot no-build area, and it's zero to 100-foot buffer zone to the associated wetland. The activity is being conducted without an order of conditions and ignoring two certified pieces of mail sent. If we don't get a response to this enforcement order by December 2nd, we may start issuing fines. We are requesting a restoration plan be filed with the issuing authority on or before December 18th, 2021.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we issue an enforcement order to said owners for wetland violations. Charlie, second it?
What kind of cutting are they doing down there, Lisa? I mean, clear cutting, or just cutting some trees?
Brush. It was flagged, but it wasn't flagged properly, and they've been...
Oh, I mean, I just didn't know if somebody was in cutting firewood.
Do you have the other enforcement?
No, whoever's doing it, whatever they're doing, is something else in mind.
Oh, no, I mean, the state law lets you go in.
Yeah.
You can cut firewood.
Yeah.
And you can cut, you can cut, um, 10 cord. You can't go in with machinery, but you can go in.
Well, he was in there with machinery.
Well, no, I mean, that, you know, I'm just saying, I didn't know.
It wasn't by hand.
Been busy, Lisa?
What's that?
You've been busy. I know. Zero Horton.
'Tis the season.
Yeah. Cutting and clearing, rubber board verification. Lisa suggests we discuss this property and vote on an enforcement order. This is Zero Horton Street.
This is up by, across from Smith Street, right? Okay.
Right across from Smith?
Havos, previous owners.
The old Havos property?
Yes.
And who was in there? Who's in there cutting and clearing?
We discussed it at the last meeting. So an update is, they took the machinery out of there, and we haven't received any notice of intent or any filing for any work on that lot.
Is this, was this the gentleman that was here last meeting?
Yes. Okay, I know I've been up to the site and measured off everything, and where he's been digging, digging, he's put holes in it, and there's no way he can even fit a septic system less than 100 feet from the wetlands. And he's gouged out a lot of the buffer zone with his equipment. Um, it's, he just, he just went on his own and started working.
So then my question is, what do we do? I mean, we don't wanna just sit tight and wait for them to file for a sec, you know, for a perk, do we? I, I think this, this needs an enforcement order as well.
Yeah, it has to be.
Yeah.
You know, he can't, he can't even get a perk test in there. He has to be 15 feet off the road, and that leaves him at best at a generous 80-foot from the wetlands where he would dig. And that is illegal.
Right.
So he cannot, he cannot even get a perk test in. And then he, he destroyed a lot of the, the buffer zone to the wetlands, and in a couple areas, he even infringed into the wetlands.
He can get a perk test, but he gotta, he has to pass the perk test.
Oh, okay. But, okay, but what I'm saying, though, is there's no room to do a perk test legal.
So what he'd have to do is cross the wetland, and in order to cross the wetland, he has to file with us.
And, and with the Army Corps? Is there a stream there?
Yes. And I don't know how far back, I haven't seen a plan as to how.
Yeah, no plan.
DEP gets a copy, Army gets a copy, we get a copy every, every time they file.
Well...
He's done nothing.
It would require a water quality permit.
Great.
Yeah. And hopefully, it would go in that order, where they'd receive those permits before they come to us, or at least concurrently, so we're not dealing with the same type of situation.
Well, if, if he did, we would just continue the hearing until, until, if he ever filed it. But right, right now, we're gonna make sure he doesn't do any more damage and it's, before he runs.
An enforcement order would, would, would hold him up. He'd, he'd have to do something.
So we'll issue an enforcement order requiring...
A wetland delineation?
Well, right.
It would require rehab of buffer zone?
The wetland delineation will shut them down. That's all, that's all this needed.
I know they did start the delineation, but we haven't seen anything, so. Okay, I'll draft that and come get, get signatures next week.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, wait a minute, was there a vote taken on that? Was there a vote made on that?
Oh, do you want to have a date where you want the rehabilitation? How long do you want, from the date of issuance, 30 days or...
Didn't he say, tell us that he, he had someone to do a delineation?
Well, yeah, and there already, there were flags out there, but last I knew, they weren't agreeing with the flags. They didn't agree with the delineation.
Well, if, if he's got someone, we can push up the time on it.
The thing is, I mean, we can't expect anyone to restore a wetland in the middle of winter.
No, that's...
So, we'll ask, what we'll do is, we'll ask for, for a plan with a wetland delineation.
How long will that take? That wetland delineation?
Okay.
Because you can't play it all the way to the first frost, I mean, beyond that.
Right.
Even beyond.
You know, um...
Depending on how much snow we get.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion that we issue an enforcement order for wetland and buffer zone violations and request a deline, a, a wetland delineation.
Yeah. Okay, sounds fair enough. And then in the spring, we'll request a re...
Charlie, is there a second?
Restoration.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm waiting, Bill.
All opposed? I didn't hear Charlie second.
Okay. Okay, unanimous.
Enforcement order, you gonna issue that, Lisa?
Yes.
Issue that enforcement order. An invoice from Beta Group. I guess we owe them $5,880.
Beta?
Beta.
Strawberry Fields.
We have an invoice from a Beta Group in the amount of $5,880 for work that was performed since we've issued an enforcement order. I mean, a denial for the project.
Okay, that was a motion?
...and communications with DEP.
That was, that was a motion, right?
I'll make a motion that we pay.
Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You gotta sign it. Every, it was every page, Bill? Every page, I think, Bill. Every page, Charlie?
What?
Every page?
No, I just worked.
Every page?
Worked, sent by signature.
He said every page. Charlie, what, what, how are we doing on that, on that account? Our, sufficient? We, sufficient?
Well, this 53G is out of the question now.
Oh, that's, yeah, no, but that's why I'm saying, our account, we have sufficient...
You've got plenty of money.
Okay.
Next, we have an invoice from Nitch Engineering, number 74376, in the amount of $2,985 for work done between August 29th and September 25th. That must have been subliminal. I make a motion that we pay this invoice.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, I gotta sign every one of them, Charlie. Maybe on this next item, I should excuse myself if I want to comment.
Yeah.
All right, they will.
Wait till Jim gets back, Bill. Wait till Jim gets back.
Well, I'm gonna.
Yeah, no, I intended, yeah.
But I thought if I walked over there, maybe Jim would be here by then.
(laughing).
So, get a soft seat.
No, I'm here.
First off, I'd really like to thank Mr. Duatt for his concern about my wetlands. I really appreciate it. And it's glad to have a neighbor, you know, who's paying attention to, to the wetlands and wants to, want to see them off.
Well, we have to...
Be protected.
Yeah, we should actually say, you're chairman now, so you have to be the next item.
Okay.
Well, that, I knew that.
Okay, we have a complaint, or as we see, a potential violation of the wetland at 563 Hart Street, and here we have the owner of the property, William Fournette, to speak on his own behalf.
Well, what, I'm sure Mr. Duatt didn't understand that the normal maintenance, that I was doing it on my property was, you know, fighting the, the autumn olive and the multi-floral rose. I've been, I've been cutting them and burning them for 25 years, and I can't get ahead of them. But my neighbor down the street bought a forest mulching machine, and when he can come up and, and do it, he's gonna come up and grind that stuff up and make, it's a beautiful little thing. He drives right through the multi-floral rose and the autumn olive, and all you got left is, is mulch. And that's what I was doing, well, that's what Justin was doing. And it was, you know, normal maintenance on my pasture. But I was glad to see that Mr. Duatt was concerned about, about my wetlands.
Okay, this here is an agricultural area?
I took a look at it. I walked out there and after I received the complaint...
...grinding up machine.
Bill, could you, Bill, stay, stay here. You stay there.
I can't hear you.
We're still discussing it.
Stay over there.
Oh, you don't need to discuss this anymore.
I took a look at it and, and all the, the cutting is outside of the regulated area. But I also took a look at the regulations as it pertains to agriculture and, so there's a normal maintenance of land and agricultural use, as long as you're continuing to make money off of your land. So that's 310 CMR, section 10.04, and it allows for management of field edges, including mowing, pruning, brush cutting, and tree removal. So thankfully, you know, the homeowner stayed out of the resources, but we did have to bring him in.
I'm sorry?
I agree with this. It falls under the agricultural.
Oh, okay.
I checked in, 310 CMR, 10.4, follow me. Exactly what he did.
Okay, all right. Now, Mr. Duatt here or...
No, he's not.
Oh, okay. And if he is...
No, that's not him.
No.
He's not here.
Mr. DeRosa, I think.
Yes.
He's there.
Okay. So, um...
Sorry about that.
Okay, so if, if Mr. Duatt is, is watching in tonight on, on his television, this activity that Mr. Fournette has been doing on his property to maintain the, um...
Astros.
Is the cutting of the autumn olive and the multi-floral rose bush is totally within the realm of legitimate actions permitted by the Department of Environmental Protection. Okay, I guess, Bill?
I'm excused.
You may come back here.
Thank you.
The only thing we ask is, of course, just let us know before you're gonna do something like that. We want everybody to kinda...
Well, this, when, when this young man has a break in his system and, and he shows up, I'll call you soon as he, soon as he drives in my driveway.
You know, Bill, and, and, you know, that would be good, because we had asked someone down on the river who was cutting the Fragmites, because Lisa got a call and then Lisa called me and I went running down there, down by the river, and, you know, a phone call, you know, when someone comes in, we just say, hey, that's, that's legit, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Thank you. Dayton Trails. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. I was in a go mode.
Go ahead, help me out. Dayton Trail Committee.
Hey, everybody, how you doing?
Hi.
This is the guy?
I'm Bob Baglini, I'm on the Trails Committee. I got to apologize, I came unprepared without any maps.
You're Bob who?
Baglini, B-A-G-L-I-N-I.
B-A-G?
Uh-huh, we need to talk about the mapping with no maps.
Nowhere I am.
Exactly, well, so what I, it's just more just a quick, I just wanted to stop into the meeting and to just let you know, we, the two committees, our committee needs to do a little more coordination, I think, with your committee, and we'd like to. And we're in the process of just developing some maps from some of the, you know, some of the projects that we're working on.
Great.
That's durable.
We're a volunteer committee, we're just chipping away at things.
Yep.
And so, we're gonna send you some.
Okay.
Do you let us know how many? And there were a few different areas. I got two items here that our chair had mentioned. One was just Broad Cove is, we're in the process of working on some trails out there, and there's some Eagle Scouts who are doing some projects in the area, and they're gonna mark trails out, build a bench, do a whole variety of different things. And one of the trails kind of extends out into the salt marsh, which we can go on, we just wanted to, you know, before we start putting trails out, you know, and advertising it for the public, we just wanted a little feedback from the Conservation Commission.
Well, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, definitely.
That's all.
So in order to do that, you gotta go through Army Corps, too.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a foot trail, pedestrian trail, yeah, that's, that's the type of thing that our committee needs some help and guidance on.
Boardwalks.
In terms of, you know, we just want to put a map up in the kiosk, so everybody knows where the trails are. We have a few of them marked out, but we don't want to put anything up there until all the town boards have had a chance to chime in.
Right, are you talking boardwalks and...
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
All foot trails right now.
And he's, and he's just talking, you're just talking about the existing trails that are there now?
Existing trails that are there now, we want to maintain them, we want to mark them out. There's one area that has a little, it's like a crappy bridge that goes across, I don't know, it's like a pallet or a board or something, and one of the Eagle projects was thinking of, you know where I'm, it's all muddy there.
Know which one that is?
So, one of the Eagle Scouts was thinking of maybe making a little better type crossing, something that's a little environmentally friendly, they've been kicking some ideas around town very, so...
Anything you gotta do like that, you gotta show us.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We're not even there yet, we're just, this is like, we're in just kicking the tires mode right now.
Okay, now, this is gonna go up to the railroad, it's gonna head north and then east up to the railroad tracks and...
Can I even show you?
No, I've, I've walked there, and matter of fact, I was out there with a weed whacker a couple of years ago and, and did some, it was overgrowing.
I gotta, I gotta, I'm sorry about this, I, I got tied up at work today and it was gonna be quite a mess. We got two areas here, two trails now that we, that are cleared relatively well-defined. There's the, there's the rail line, the old rail line that goes up to, somebody put a fence back there and that's been a topic of discussion lately. And then, there's the other trail, the new parking area on 138, and that's where the kiosk is.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a loop trail in the woods. And then there's a third trail that you can walk out in the marsh with a pair of boots on during low tide and kind of loop around on that salt grass, I guess, just, just on foot, so...
We, we, we're not crazy about people walking on the marsh.
Exactly. So, we weren't sure, and that's why we wanted to submit the map before we put it up in the kiosk.
The trails that we have there now are adequate.
Do you see, do you see it should really be on here or not? Start with the draft map, get it out...
Yeah, you don't want to wreck the, the salt marsh.
No.
And, because what's gonna happen is then kids are gonna get out there, then you're gonna have beer cans and bottles floating around and...
Who knows, right? So...
Yeah.
So, we have, I mean, this isn't the only project that are, you know, that I think that in the next few years are gonna be worked on, or, we're trying to come up with some kind of standard way to display the maps. I know the Dartmouth Natural Resources Trust has a nice, they have like 50 properties and they have a nice system. I, I think they have a lot, a lot of money to maintain all that and to develop that, but like some, you know, we'd like something to look nice for the town, so we're just slowly chipping away at it and...
Now, there are two viewing stations, I believe. Bill, you built two, two viewing stations there? Four.
Yeah.
Okay, and, you know, certainly, your trails, I think they already lead to those things, those, that work that Bill has done, he's put a lot of time into it and, you know, it's, it's, yeah, keeping the trails open and, and neat, so that people can get in there. Because I know, a couple of years ago, my wife wouldn't go for a walk with me, she went so far and there was just brush everywhere.
Yeah, right.
It's actually supposed to be within the wetland three feet, so if we could try to limit it to as close to three feet.
Right, and, and we don't have anything delineated in here, we have no survey, we've known, nothing in here, so we're just going off of what the existing trails are and the foot trails and, you know, we just wanna, you know, try to foster as much volunteer work to...
Yeah.
Get them maintained, so that there's no burden on the town, really, so that's kind of the, that's kind of the intent of me coming here today, there was...
And a lot of, yeah, I mean, I think Bill was, is involved with the project, or he's trying, you know, trying to foster a project down there, too. So, it would be good if maybe everyone could coordinate, yeah.
Now, are you doing something too on, I'm gonna say it's behind the restaurant 1712 and... and it, okay, and it goes all the way over the bridge and goes to Bristol Aggie, actually, the railroad tracks.
I can, I can just talk a little bit more about that. So the the D C R, who owns Sweet Knowles, right, Department of Conservation Recreation, they own, it's a state park. They also own the rail line from that little parking area that just got made behind seventeen twelve, little gravel parking area, all the way up towards, uh, what's the side street next to Reese's Garage and Aquaria Plant?
Sandpiper.
Sandpiper. So there's, there's access down at the end of Sandpiper. So they own about a two mile stretch and and they just got approvals and we're talking with, with Serphead, Bill Napolitano.
Yeah.
Um, he, so he's been in the process of trying to work on this Taunton River Trail project for his whole life. He hopes to one day go down it in his wheelchair or something, he says, right? So the D C R is 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 planning on making some improvements to that whole trail from that, it's it's a two mile stretch. They got, they have design and construction dollars, I believe, is what Bill said, already set aside for it with the, either with the infrastructure bill that just went through or others, or other means. They have, they have, they have funds to physically construct a nice improvement in there. Now, and the city of Taunton is is also in the process of developing that part, their part of the Taunton River Trail, which goes from, it's the, it's the restaurant right on the river there, used to be right where F P Rogers is. River House, right? So from that park is a little access they wanna make up to the trail up behind Fifth Street. And they have, they're gonna bring it all the way down to, for now, at least to the power plant, the T M L P Power Plant driveway. And they're looking at other options on how to keep continuing it to other trail sources, so.
Right now, the power plant has it blocked off, but there's nothing saying that they, that they couldn't
Yeah.
make a tunnel, a wire tunnel for people to go through.
Or, yeah, there's already different options that they're looking at.
Can't go through Princess House because there's a building across.
Right. So.
Your Princess House, it stops there, and Aquarius has got it blocked off, too.
Right. So one of the things, the Trails Committee, in the last town meeting, we put out a, you know, we were talking to Serphead and looking at all these different options. We said, we really need a feasibility study to figure out how to make this the one nice continuous trail between all the different communities. What a great asset it would be for the town, right? So the study is aimed at figuring out how to connect all the pieces for all the different communities, all the different options. Studying how to either accommodate, go around.
Well, you'd have to go around.
Go around, explore.
Water plan.
Work with the water plan. I know the water plants own the city of Bedford, uh, not New Bedford, excuse me, Brockton, the city of Brockton recently purchased.
We have a trussel also that goes over the three mile river.
Right. So there's, there's all those options that really need to be looked at by a, you know, a bunch of professionals to sit there and figure out, you know, what's the, you know, what are the best options, what's, you know, and make the recommendations to the town. And then that study, that feasibility study is like a keystone to
Grants.
Grants for construction and other things so that the town doesn't have to pay for it. And I think Bill just gave us, Napolitano just gave us some good news. We went to town meeting. It passed by a little bit, a few votes, but I think there's some funds that Serphead is either gonna reimburse or is gonna be able to fund the whole study, so.
Nice.
The towns aren't gonna have to pay for it. So we've been working hard to try to figure all these things out and get these things done at no cost to the town. And that's, that's what we've been trying to do. So we'd, we'd like to do a little more coordination with your board.
Sounds good.
It's just, it's, it's appropriate.
Bob, I'd like to sit with you sometime when you got a minute or or an hour.
Yeah, more.
And I'll, and I'll, and I'll explain to you what plans I have.
Good.
And how they're gonna be funded and maybe you can
Good, that's great.
You can jump along with me.
Good. I would, I would love that. And so that was one item, maps, coordination, and then this is all site information, right? And then Jeff had also mentioned, he's our chair, Cavalo, he mentioned Brook Street property. I don't know if that was on the agenda.
Yeah, that's kind of small, but
It's map twelve, lot thirty seven.
This is, this is the piece that's to the north of Brook Street Solar and south of, what is the development there?
Are you talking about the place right down the other side of the river that we just purchased?
No.
No, it's, uh,
No.
It's behind, it's kind of, it's kind of tucked behind.
It's on Aubrey.
Yeah, it's on a paper street.
Off Audrey Lane.
Up off Audrey Lane?
Nice big piece in the woods over behind the new development. So if you, you drive down Brook Street, you've got the sharp ninety. Solar's on the left. You keep going through the woods and it's past the development on the
Yeah, I know, I know where the property is.
Parcels in the back that are all kind of town owned.
It's got a stone, it's got a, it's got a stone cover.
Be a nice area to be able to
Right, Nancy?
You know, enjoy the, the
Isn't it landlocked, though?
Well, I think we have access, I think there's access to all our properties. Maps will be great.
Right. So we wanna kind of get the process going and just kind of making sure everything's consistent because right now, we're just a volunteer board. There's, I don't think the town has a G I S department or an engineering department. So this is all just kind of pro bono stuff that
I see Beta. You're not the Beta Group? Okay, I was gonna say, if it was, you had plenty of maps.
I know. I, so I used to be with Beta about two years ago. I left, I went to the Narragansett Bay Commission. So it's just, I just have the old jacket from my old job, so. Kind of a small world. Everybody's talking about invoices and blah, blah, blah. I'm laughing.
All right, Bob, we thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Keep in touch with us and we'll get you on the agenda next.
Thanks for letting us talk for three minutes. I appreciate the time and we'll be in more touch.
Great. Sounds good. We appreciate it. You, too. Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, but the, um, the Brook Street parcel. Are you guys gonna do anything with that now or are you gonna? I suppose the request was to discuss converting that to Conservation Act.
Well, it is. It is. It is now, yeah. You're talking about the land that's north of Solar?
Yeah.
Which?
We'll have, we'll get some clarification.
Okay. Yeah, there's another one worth thinking about, too, but we'll talk about it another time. Yeah.
You're gonna do the next one.
You're back. Take care.
Okay, we have five seventy eight Hart Street. It was an enforcement order and Lisa?
I'm here, yeah.
Go ahead, okay.
Mr. Duatt reached out to me today. He was planning on coming to the meeting, but he had, he's been having COVID-like symptoms for two days and he said he's going for a test tomorrow. But he has, in the meantime, gotten his ASBIL plan finalized. His ASBIL plan's finalized. The Board of Health has a copy. I do not have a copy yet. And he's asked what we need. And I had suggested, we needed the, we were, had discussed the R D A. He's willing to submit an ASBIL with a letter. See, where it's complicated is that the order of conditions have expired. So in order to close it out, we need something to finalize this, right? Normally, we request a certificate of compliance. So in this case, you know, I really think that a letter and an ASBIL plan would be sufficient. So then he has reached out to Proline and Bob's here right now to see if Bob will help him write this letter and finalize the project. The ASBIL was drafted from your company?
Yeah, we did the septic system. We didn't file the original notice of intent.
Right.
But as far as the septic system goes, that was all constructed and finalized, meets Title V. So we shot the elevations of the system as after it was put in, we inspected it during construction, and then shot a finished grade ASBIL, which is required by the Board of Health, just to show that it meets the breakout requirements for the neaching field. Because the system's in the front yard and the land, as you know, sloped down towards the street. And then the system was put in flat, so it does pitch off the system towards Hart Street. And that didn't mean breakout. So everything that was done regarding the system only met Title V requirements. And like Lisa said, that was turned into Todd, pilling at the Board of Health.
Well, how's the vegetation on it?
Well, when we shot the ASBIL, it was a few months ago. It was just after they did the finished grading because we were required to do the final grade ASBIL after that's put in. We can make a statement if the loom wasn't placed. We can make that statement, say the loom wasn't in place. But it was. The vegetation was beginning to grow at that time, but I hadn't been out there since, so I'm not sure.
And so a winter since?
That was probably a couple of months ago that we actually shot the finished grade ASBIL. Yeah, it was during summer that we did that. So I haven't been out to that site in probably at least a couple of months. And as far as the notice of intent, I spoke to Lisa about that. We didn't do the original filing, I would notice an intent. But if he wants to talk to me about it, then I can review what was submitted and then I can determine if it was done in compliance or if there were deviations done to the notice of intent.
Okay.
So I'd have to go back out to the site and look at it. At that time, I can look at the vegetation again over the field, all in the front yard, so. But I'll work with you, Lisa, on that and we can see what was initially included.
I have the file here, too.
Okay, yeah. And I can, I'll grab the order of conditions from the registry.
Okay.
And then I'll get, I'll get a copy of the original notice of intent from you. And then we'll see. And I'll see how it came up. The whole project has been, the house is building, the construction for many years, so.
I mean, you know, we've never received the recording information for it. We never received the recording information for it.
Oh, for the order of conditions?
Yeah, but
I'll look in the registry, but maybe they never recorded.
But I think it's there, yeah. No, I think it's recorded. It just expired, no. What year was that? Do you remember? Okay, I got it. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have to look. I don't even know that it was recorded because I don't have any of that information.
Yeah, I'll check tomorrow.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Oh, you mean Monday. Tomorrow is Friday.
Well, he can check tomorrow. Just because the town hall isn't open on Friday doesn't mean, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
At halftime, I'll check.
Okay.
Okay. So we're getting near, we're getting close to the end. Okay. I don't know if there's any questions from anyone on this. Okay, I guess, Lisa, we're all set to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. Two thousand and sixth County Street, David DeRosa, enforcement order led up.
Thanks, Bob. Have a Thanksgiving.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Ordinarians. My name is Michelle Grenier. Hi.
All right.
So what are we looking at here?
Looks like wetlands.
Yes, that's wetlands. That's all wet, that's the wetland line. Those are the wetland lines.
Green, okay.
Yeah, just so you know, we took off the flood zone line just so we could concentrate on the wetlands, but there is flood zone. But I just wanted to tell you that, so I'm Michelle Grenier. I'm a P W S professional wetland scientist and a certified wetland scientist. I delineated those wetlands from Mr. DeRosa. And we just came tonight to ask you to lift the enforcement order. He hasn't done any other work on the land and also to tell you that we'll be filing an Anrad for the property. So we're asking you to lift the enforcement order tonight.
You, you flagged this?
I flagged that, yes, sir.
Flag. Nine A, eight A?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, where's the road? This is the
Okay, so the road that comes in
I should pull that stuff back.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, yeah.
Do you look on, it says right there, County Streets?
County Streets, yeah.
This is the road that comes up and then it goes up into the Colossus.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is where those trucks are, what's his name? Al what?
Yeah, he was, uh, when he was student.
I can remember, but I can remember him in my classroom.
Yeah, so this is the road. You can kind of see, it's a little translucent, but this is County Street.
We know, we know where everything is.
All right, so.
So this is where it comes up. This is the roadway.
This is wet, see wetlands here?
Yeah.
And then this isolated and then isolated. And this is kind of a little isolated, but it does go on this other property.
Okay, so we're not here to deliberate whether or not the wetlands are what they are here, okay? They haven't filed an Anrad yet.
That's right. I'm just showing them.
Yeah, so we're, we're, they're pretty much just asking us to lift the enforcement order.
That's right. That's right.
But we don't see the, my question is, where are the piles of, where's the disturbance in adjacent to the wetlands?
Well, this disturbance you're talking about has been there for many, many years. It's not really disturbance. It's been there for many, 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 way before you and me. It's been there for many years.
Those guys have been around that long. They've been on the commission that long.
No, I've, I've been around a long time.
Yeah, so that, that person has been parking his trucks there for quite a while. I mean, it's not recently disturbed, you can tell, and there's no further disturbance. You can tell that, too.
Okay, so
I, I was here several years ago because when Mr. DeRosa bought this in two thousand and sixteen, we, we walked it and that was there. So, I mean, it's been there for a while.
Off this, you can point over here. Is it off this property?
No, no, it's here. It's over here. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, this here, this here was almost a storage area right in the middle. There's, there's, there's an area here. Charlie, you with me? Okay. There's a, there's a storage area for, for loom and other material here.
This road comes right into
Okay, so
These are trucks parked here now.
Right, yes. Now, what, okay, you say you want us to lift it, but we gotta know what you're going to do and
There's not, nothing's gonna be done. Nothing's gonna be done. What we're gonna do is file an Anrad. That's all we're gonna do. There's, nothing's gonna be done there.
Well, if you, if you file the Anrad and then, and show where those where the land has been disturbed in relationship, this just, this shows elevation, but it doesn't show where everything has been cut or disturbed in other ways, grubbed or whatever it is. I mean, this is something that, that we would like to see.
Yeah, we understand Mr. DeRosa may not have done most of that, but he bought it that way.
Yes. But that area, even the area outside of it is not wetlands. I mean, it's all Russian olive. It's all multiflora rose.
Well, we can deliberate that.
He scented fern. I, I mean, I can tell you what it is. It's crab apple. It's cherry. It's common wood.
Well, this is something that I would like to see where all that is on this map. You know, you say lift the enforcement order, but the enforcement order was issued because work was being done either in the wetlands or in the buffer zone or whatever. And I want to see where that is on this map.
I have a question. So the area that was, that is back there like that, we'll just call it a Colossus, right?
Well, yeah, the, the, the back elevated area.
So I haven't, I haven't, like, imposed on that footprint ever since it's always been what it was since it was used prior to me. So the enforcement order that was put on was said that I pushed into that, but there was nothing that pushed into it, even still, it's outside of that twenty-five foot no-touch buffer zone if it was even anywhere close to it. I haven't pushed into anything additionally to even approach into that one-hundred-foot buffer zone on anywhere on the property.
Okay, now, where, see, I'd like to see where the building is here.
There's no building on the property.
There's no building on the property.
So where is the building where you have your, where you used to have your office?
That's another problem.
That's down the street.
That's next door to the south.
That's on his property, this is his property.
But right off the corner of that property, there used to be a drainage well. And the water used to run right down through there and go down under the, on the main street and head to the road.
To the ICI now.
Yeah, to the ICI, but I'm sure.
Was that, was that through, what, the town's stormwater or...
Through the town water, I don't, I don't, never followed by this, but.
Okay.
Right, right behind the song though.
Yeah.
The old song though.
The old song though.
So what now, whoa, because there used to be like rag songs.
That, that way up in the back on the upper.
Yeah.
The mill down front.
The song though down front.
There used to be a dairy farm, a dairy barn for grapes. And it became part of the song though, right behind us is wet.
Right.
And it runs up through to another person who owns a property up there and he can verify.
Yeah, no, that's, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is where the song though is.
But what you don't understand is he, I mean, it's been done, but a road has been in there, you can tell that.
Well, okay, I, I agree with you, the road's been there for as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
But work was done here, all the way through here, in, in this front portion, within the buffer zone or, or even the wetland. And, and you have, you have a line here.
Oh, he cut, you mean he cut the brush here, is that what you're talking about?
Well, all went, all through here, brush trees, uh...
He didn't cut the brush, yeah.
The area of work.
There's still trees there, though, that are...
Oh, yeah, there are trees inside there.
Yeah, inside, inside here, but, but the...
No, right here, actually, yeah. Yeah, there's trees there.
You know, and yet you don't, you don't show the line of, of work.
I concur with Jim is pretty much saying what I'm thinking, so.
You know, I would like to see where the cleared area is. And, you know, within the past few years, though, David, you have done some...
I have some pictures, but... What the problem is for me is it's not clear now, this is all grown up, it's all grown vegetation, it's...
Well, they're not trees, though, there, it might be vegetation, it might be, um...
Although, he pulled out a lot of that brush.
There's a lot of brush there.
Yeah, but he pulled a lot of it out.
Yeah.
And that's why we have the enforcement order because of the...
That's when the enforcement order went on.
It doesn't really say what in the enforcement was, that's why I'm here too, because it doesn't say...
Well, it was in the wetlands.
Yeah, it was...
Well, he's in the buffer zone too.
It's in the buffer zone.
He is in the buffer zone and, you know...
It's not wetland, so.
So in, in this case, I mean, I think, you know, there's a couple of things going on. You got active, people actively working, storing stuff and pile...
Just trucks.
Okay, just trucks now, but when they were piling things, you know, and, you know, you don't have, the site isn't...
Wasn't delineated at that time.
Well, it wasn't delineated and the site isn't surfaced for that, you don't have the stormwater system in place. I mean, it's not...
Yep.
Prepared for asphalt being piled or anything, you know what I mean?
Yeah, there's nothing like, there's no asphalt back there.
Well, yeah, there's, there's a little, like, from the cleanouts from the truck, but it's not like...
Yeah.
No, he, he actually did, he's keeping it clean.
Yeah, so we even proposed to the commission when she came down there, you know, a few weeks back, and we put up, you know, whether it's like those concrete bins and you can tell inside of that, whatever needs to happen, but again, just as far as the enforcement order, us inside of the wetlands or whatnot, you know, I don't, I don't know any of that. Because that, that same footprint is the same footprint that we got.
So your whole property is in the buffer zone too, so it's all a regulated area?
Right, but if, if that was, so from my understanding of what this is, and again, this is my understanding, if there was an area that has always been used as whatever it is, right? So if it was used to house material or whatever the case might be, isn't that always a continued use? You can always use that, and that doesn't now take my buffer zone and make it twenty-five feet smaller because it's always been used up to that mark. I mean, there's everybody that's inside of town that has had the exact same footprint. You guys don't go in and give them an enforcement order and now say, well, you have to go twenty-five feet into that mark?
Well, I wasn't around when you got your original enforcement order, okay? When was it, what year was it?
I'm not sure.
Do you know, Charlie?
But I mean, the enforcement order now is what, is what that is saying. So when you came down to the site, you know, with Jim the other day, and you said, just flag it all as, as wet around the circle and then we'll figure out, you know, from there, where your twenty-five feet mark is.
Well, yes, so you took, the reason I went is because you said you wanted to remove those two piles of loom and use them.
Right.
Okay, so is that still what you're trying to do?
That is, yeah.
Okay.
I guess my question was, is when you had said to me, like, you don't have to have an engineer, you don't even have to have a botanist come down, just, we'll flag it all as wet and then we'll go from there and we'll make your twenty-five foot mark. But you guys gave me an enforcement order that said that I needed to have an engineer and a botanist come in, but when you came on the site, it was a little bit different than that.
Gotcha.
So I just want to try to clarify.
Yeah. What do you guys want? Are you taking that soil out or do you want to use it there?
He has, so he wants to use, I thought we said he could take that.
Take it out. In order to remove it...
Take it out, yeah, take it off site.
Yeah, what we were looking for was to mark a li, a limit of disturbance around it. So we have erosion controls in place before he starts digging it up, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but, so can I add to that? So a few years back when I was in front of the commission, I'm not sure exactly who it was, but I basically proposed to build a four-foot berm all the way around everything so that I didn't have to put a corrosion control in, and that was okay back then. That's the same, that same four-foot berm is around everything, so essentially, there's nothing, no erosion control that's gonna do any better than what a four-foot tall berm is gonna do that's around that entire pile, which technically isn't even in the wetlands.
No, I mean, those piles that are in the back, I mean, I, I don't have problems with him removing that. But I still want to see...
But, you know, but there's no work allowed because there's an enforcement order.
Yeah.
So that's what, what he's getting at. In order to remove those piles, he needs the enforcement order lifted. Are we satisfied with removing the enforcement order at this point to allow him to remove the piles? And is that all we're gonna allow him to do is install, I still want erosion controls, especially along that, along, along that pot path, I mean, you know?
Yeah, I can, that's, that's not a problem.
And it's not gonna be hay bills. No, 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 no. No, no. So, you know, the other problem, I mean, there's been brought to my attention that the taxes aren't coming. And I'm not supposed to allow things to happen on properties where taxes aren't coming.
I just paid the, the tax bill.
Great. So, we can follow up with Mary and see how she, the treasurer.
Okay, so if we give a conditional vote based upon taxes?
And, but I would like, before we load on anything, you know, I want to see, I do want to see a plan, where are the stockpiles?
That's essential.
Yeah. Where are the stockpiles adjacent to the wetland and the buffer zone? And where are the erosion controls gonna go?
Okay, we'll do that, yeah.
That's right, we have that.
If we'll, if, if you'll agree to lift the enforcement, we'll have a plan out with you at the next meeting or probably right after the holidays.
Okay, you get us the plan and then, and then we will take action.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Did anyone in the audience have anything we do need to ask?
Does anyone in the audience have anything?
Any comments on this?
Like, I owe him a call.
No.
Okay.
I appreciate that very much.
Okay, and, you know, what I...
I understand what you want, I do.
What I want to see here too is, is where was the limit here that was, you know, so that we can address that.
Yeah, can I put a record request in for all the information on this land too?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's yours.
All right, just, you have to fill that out with the town clerk.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Lisa, you have one?
Cedar Street issue.
Thank you. Do you want to keep all three of those or... No, not necessarily, we just need one. Okay. Now you do, nice meeting you.
You need, you need, yeah.
You said, take care.
Lisa, you got all you need? You got all you need? Yeah, so you can, if you want to mark this here and return it next meeting with, with everything.
Twenty years ago, too.
December. How's Dad? Okay, just, okay.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Fifteen sixty-six Cedar Street. The owners are in the process of filing, Alicia will update.
I have an update. So I reached out to the wetland scientist, I said, where are things at? And he submitted a draft restoration plan, he's waiting for the engineer. Zenith Consulting is preparing the actual plan with the calculations. So he's waiting for them to determine, do all the numbers, because there's various disturbances. They've been very cooperative and we appreciate that, so. But in September, we did go out there and Zenith is just swamped. So his response was, all right, hold on one second. So they do have a preliminary plan that shows. However, they are waiting, he is waiting for Zenith to come up with wetland impact totals, buffer zone and twenty-five foot impacts, replication area, planting layout. We discussed this at the meeting, these, all these things, but they are just not on the plan yet. The homeowner is willing to move forward with it. So I was happy to receive an update. There's also a narrative that he submitted along with it as far as the restoration plan. If anybody wants to see it, it's still, like I said, doesn't have most of the square footage filled in. My question for the commission on this is, do we want to go notice of intent for something like this? A lot of this, this gentleman did not create, a lot of it he bought. In order for him to go the notice of intent route, he's gonna have to go file with Army Corps and it's just a much longer process.
I would say, let's, let's just get it done, let's, let's, let's monitor him along the way and get it done.
I spoke with Andrew Poynt, he gave me some enforcement advice. And basically said, DEP would like to see more, less notices of intent for restoration and more restoration plans, like you said, overseen by us. So I think in this case with the wetland scientist that Steven Schmeele is reputable. I think between he and I, we can make sure this gets done right and it will save the landowner some money. So that's where we're at with that.
That's plausible.
Oh, good. Yeah, sounds good.
All right, good.
Okay.
That's, that's a night.
Night. County Street.
Yeah, Mr. Mitchell's here.
Next.
How you doing?
Sorry to make you wait so long.
That's okay, I actually got a lot of work done while I was here. I just wanted to come by, I know it was on for a report tonight, and just let you know, I represent Russell Enos, his sister's also involved in this, although she stepped back. And I know the commission and Wanda report from an environmental engineer. I know you've met Mr. Enos several times now and you understand, and I put it in my email to Ms. Caledonia that hi, his real concern is he's being singled out. He does feel that everyone else is filled, he hasn't gotten to fill, and he's just kind of left where he is. I came by because I don't want it to be contentious, I want to get some idea of how, how far the board's looking for him to do. Because when we met and then when we first met here, the last meeting I attended, the indication was the board would be satisfied with the clearing of kind of the evident debris at the top of the fill, a lot that had been put in last year. We weren't clear from the last meeting, which we, I wasn't able to attend, I had another hearing that night elsewhere. And my clients have difficulty getting out at night, including Mr. Russell. Are we looking for something that indicates a clearing of the old fill? Or are we just looking at what's on top and how extensive are we looking for this cleanup to be? Because he has talked to Teescape and they were ready to come in, he held off. He also, and I know it doesn't directly result, affect this, but he has met with the state DOT and they told him they're gonna change some of the contour. I can't say I'm familiar with exactly what's in front, but Russell told me that when the state came by, they agreed that the, the contour of the road drove water, directed it to his property and they're gonna change the road. Now, when they'll do it, I don't know, it's the state and it's DOT. But they are gonna change that and that may help with some of the area on his property being wet. But I think we're just looking for some direction, how extensive are we looking? I mean, we're looking for him to go back to its natural state, take all the fill out? Or are we looking just to get the debris?
Without a plan, I think the first thing is a, someone, you need to get someone in there to survey it and tell us what's...
Like a construction, was that the one with construction debris?
Yeah, there's some, it's mostly landscaping debris, but yeah, on the top, there were, there was, I thought, a lot of woods, some metal there and that type of thing.
You know, right now, I, you know, you come here and you're asking how much? If, if you had gotten someone in here a half year ago, when we first issued the enforcement order, I mean, we could be well under the way, underway to, to get things resolved. And yet, I feel as though there's an awful lot of foot dragging going on and nothing is being accomplished. And you're trying to extend it by asking us more questions rather than getting work done. That's my personal opinion, the others have their opinions, I'm sure, but the more I see foot dragging, the more I want to see it get cleared right down to the bottom.
Well, I don't know, I, I, I've only looked at it from a distance. I, I never got up close enough to see what kind of material was in there. Lisa and I were doing an observation on another piece of property to the north of that property. So I, I really haven't seen...
How long has Mr. Enos been living there?
He doesn't live there.
Oh, then how long has he owned the property?
Oh, they've owned it since the forties.
It was his parents'.
Well, then evidently he's responsible for all of that because back in the forties, trains went through there.
Yeah, no, well, I don't know then, but, yeah. Well, it's close, then it was close.
Two years.
I know trains were came through here because I used to watch them in the fifties.
Haridike.
Haridike and, and behind Eighth Street and behind Railroad Avenue, they used to do grain deliveries.
And so we do have other violators in that same area, which I know that Mr. Enos was wondering, why am I singled out? But the reason why they were singled out is we received a complaint specifically on that one. So I do have a list. And at the storm order committee yesterday, we discussed going forward with holding the other violators accountable too. So the commission should discuss doing that as well.
That, that, if that gets cleaned out right down to the bottom, that then becomes the, the pathway that the other gentleman was here.
Not if it belongs to, not if that property must, belongs.
It's his property, yeah.
It's his property.
Okay, it's not the, it's not the railway and the state taking it over?
Sold off a long time ago.
Okay, all right.
No, it's his, it's his property.
So I get the message and I'll let Mr. Russell know.
Yeah, show us some kind of a plan. Show us something, please.
I'll do it.
An awful lot of foot dragging.
As I said, Mr. Russell strongly believes, it's good to know that the storm order committee would look in and if this, because he does feel singled out, he's a Vietnam vet, disabled and he feels. No, but he feels.
I think he's probably being singled out simply because from what I observed, he's got the most. His pile is so much bigger than everybody else.
Well, his pile hasn't been tamped down like everyone else has over time, so.
Well, I think everything else that I've, as I, what we were, Lisa and I were looking at was, was wood. You know, some stumps and some branches and stuff like that.
No, there's no question of that.
But then from where we were working, we could see this pile that was almost as high as his backyard. I didn't, I didn't approach it.
Twenty, thirty feet of fill in there.
Yeah.
Debris.
Okay, I'll let Mr. Enos know and urge him to hire a environmental.
Get, get something going. Let us see a plan. You know, an engineering phone number, a name and address or something.
We'll get something.
Get, get us anything.
This is what we were asking half a year ago.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Twenty-five sixty Elm Street.
Alrighty.
Complaint was received. Lisa visited the site, observed clearing within the bylaw twenty-five foot undisturbed vegetation zone. She will update the commission.
So the landowner was asked, I believe by you, to contact me and she did. She left me a message and I contacted her back and we spoke. She applied for, ended up applying for a driveway permit, which was outside of our regulated area. And what she told me was the ex, the person doing the excavation went a little crazy and went in the wrong location. So that's how we ended up in the twenty-five, in the buffer zone.
Oh, okay, you're talking about the Bell property?
No. A different one.
Oh, Jesus. Which one is this one?
This is the Enright property.
The what?
Enright. Enright, the, the barn. So in any.
Enfield.
All right, Enfield, I'm sorry.
All right, now I know where we are.
So in any case, I spoke with her and I told, you know, I spoke with the building commissioner and the building commissioner spoke with her and confirmed the exact location of the driveway. That driveway is going to be outside of our jurisdiction, outside of our buffer zone. So she was allowed to proceed. Since then, I guess some things have come up with the tax treasurer that's separate. But I did reach out to the owner and I explained to her that we don't want that disturbed area left as is. We want it seeded. So I need to continue to follow up to make sure that's done.
Okay.
What are they going to seed there? What are they going to set out?
We'll do some erosion control mix or, you know, some, some, I don't know, roadside. It's roadside. You know, native.
Sure.
I'll have them get something.
All right, so Lisa, on this twenty-five sixty Elm, I was thinking about the one further down, down Elm.
Oh, yeah, that's not on our agenda.
At this point in time, does she have any, does she, is she putting in the driveway?
Yeah.
She did?
Well, I don't know. I, I don't know if she's been stopped. She may have been stopped.
Okay.
So I don't.
Because it's, you know, there's, there was some grating, stone.
Yeah.
There was a lot of stone put in.
Right.
Okay. And I didn't think she would be able to get a permit for a driveway or a permit for anything. She hadn't lived there in a long time, hadn't paid taxes in a long time. So, okay.
Well, I can follow up with the part that's in our jurisdiction, but the rest of it isn't.
You're the only one that's ever got a phone number from her. Keep it. William Street letter issued.
Oh, yeah.
Lisa, we'll update the commission.
Yeah, I have another one here. You guys must be sick of hearing me talk by now. Okay, so this one's Mr. Martin, who received his building permit for his garage within the fifty foot, it's been built within the fifty foot no touch. So I asked him earlier in the week, what is happening? Who have you hired? We need an update for the meeting. We expected you to have someone on board and ready to file something with us November first. And yes, I did hire Outback. I met with them last week. I met with Greg. All right, and he said, we're starting on the plan. We talked, the same thing you and I talked about. They're going to come out and measure and we're going to put the barrier lines on. So, you know, this is another one where he's already received his permit. The garage is already built. You know, the best thing we can do at this point.
Rehab it as best as possible.
And to make sure that at least the remaining portion of the lot that's within our jurisdiction, or the whole lot's within our jurisdiction, but the twenty-five foot no touch, where we can keep it at twenty-five foot no touch and natural, we're going to, we're going to follow through and make sure that happens. So I, you know, I can email him next week and tell him that we'd like to see, you know, something filed on this in the next.
Well, by, by December sixteenth.
By December sixteenth?
Well, that's, that's our next meeting. Actually, we need it before the.
It would have to be December second, so we would like to see something filed for our January, January meeting. I think that would be fair.
Well, okay.
Because it's, you know, Outback hasn't even been out there yet. I mean, they haven't been back out there yet. They have to go out there. Next week's Thanksgiving. So that's it on that. I don't have an update on Mr. Bierdus. I think he's another one, he's dragging his feet on that. Two-three-nine-six Pleasant Street.
Yeah, what is it? Twenty-three ninety-six Pleasant. Where was that, Lisa?
That's the house that's already been built.
What do you mean?
The addition that's already been built on Pleasant Street. So.
Oh, I see.
You know.
Okay, I know what you're talking about.
Lighthouse is preparing that. Do we want to give him a deadline? He never got a deadline.
That's, you need the as-built.
Well, they're filing a notice of intent to prove that they met the performance standards during their construction.
Should have never had a building permit issued.
So do we want to give him a deadline? We can tell them we want this filed for January as well. Okay.
Okay. Last item on the agenda.
My turn. Me and Sylvia. That's right too, she got a booster today.
Oh, no.
Okay, Bill and Sylvia Frenette at five sixty-three Hatch Street. Wish to be placed on the agenda. Bill, you're on.
You feeling okay, Sil?
Just sit down.
I'll sit right here, okay?
Yeah, slide a chair over.
Charlie, we're concerned about our wetlands. And we want to know why nothing's been done about it. It's been being filled with silt for the last six years. You've issued three enforcement orders over there. And there's nothing being done about the silt in my, in my wetlands.
I didn't get the conversation. You were addressing me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Charlie, my wetlands have been being filled in now for about six years from the property across the street from me. You've issued three enforcement orders over there. Because the silt is running from his property. It used to run on, it used to run off on his driveway side of his property. And then you issued an enforcement order and they stopped running from the driveway. But it ran down the middle of his property into the swale, down into my property. You issued another enforcement order. Now the, now the, and he stopped the, the water from running from the center of his property. Now he, now the water is running from his property onto his neighbor's property and coming down the neighbor's driveway. I think you observed that and you said. No, you, you, I, I, you finally, I finally got you. I finally got you over there when it was running with like, you know, like coffee milk. And you, you went over and looked at the back of the property and said, he created his own problem by clearing the backside of his property. So you issued another enforcement order. And that one was supposedly ordering him to get an engineer and an engineer plan. I don't think you ever saw a plan or even got a name of an engineer. But it's still running off his property into his neighbor's property, coming down the side of the driveway where you and Jim saw it. And it's still coming onto my property. And, and I would like something done about the silt on my property building up. I had a wetland scientist over there monitoring the runoff from November two thousand nineteen to November of two thousand twenty. And he determined how much silt was coming in there. You all got a copy of that? Now, if he filled his pickup truck with that much silt while I was gone, drove over to my pond and dumped it in my pond, would you, would you issue him an enforcement order to tell him not to get that silt out of my pond?
Call the police. You call the police.
The police don't have anything, the police won't have anything to do with wetland protection. It's you guys that regulate the Wetland Protection Act.
In other words, we let him do what he wanted to do. He got away with it. And we had to pay to get that silt measured. And he didn't care. He doesn't care. We need someone to help us. Nobody helped, nobody.
He's me.
I don't, no, it's not that he tried and that's what you say all the time. He tried, he's trying. When he was trying, he didn't have an engineer. You were telling him what to do. Jim was telling him what to do. It's not the same. He damaged our wetlands, but that's okay. That's the point I'm trying to make. Is that okay?
I'm going to jump in here.
I'm asking a question to Charlie. Is that okay?
I'm not answering.
You're not going to answer why?
Because we've been over this and over this and over this.
Yes, because you all give the answer just like now.
We've tried to accommodate you.
No.
Tried to accommodate him.
You saw what was coming off his property. It took six years. Six years. Six years for it. Now it doesn't come as much because now he has grass. That's the only reason. The only reason. That's my, that's all they have to say about this. I don't think you, you, you care at all.
Brandon's measurement, and you know Brandon Fanoff. He's a wildlife, a wetland scientist. He did the, he did the observation for me. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it for this year because the pond never dried up enough for Brandon to get to the sites that he measured originally. So all we have is from November nineteen to two thousand twenty, which Brandon estimated at sixteen hundred cubic feet, cubic feet of silt in the pond in that period of time. That's a pickup truck full. Now, between two thousand and twenty and November of two thousand twenty-one, I got a lot more silt in the pond than I did from nineteen to twenty because of that big storm that we had. My pond was just laden with silt. It was just covered with it. You could, you could, you could put your foot down on the edge of the pond and it upward puff the silt that was covered. My whole pond was covered with it. That silt ran all the way down to Broad Cove. And I sent you pictures of that too. Something, you got to do something about my pond, my, my wetlands that's been being filled in for the last six years. Is it because I'm on the commission that you don't want to? Every wetland, everybody that's filled a wetland in the town of Dayton has had, has had to fix it. Except my neighbor across the street. Why's that?
They made alterations directly in the, so that we could act on it. There's been no direct alteration there. It runs off his property, runs down the street, then it runs down the intermittent stream. But it's not all his. All of that.
Oh, no, it's all his, Charlie. He's the only, he's the only one with, with silt on that, he's the only one with bare ground on that hill.
And you didn't sue them, you didn't bother them. They cleaned out the ditch and when it rained, it did the same thing. Silt went into your pond.
I can take silt from the, from the construction of the, the town when they cleaned the swale. I don't mind that at all. But for six years, this guy has been dumping silt into my pond and nobody does anything about it. I don't know why. I don't, it's, it's not a pond. It's a certified, oh, we don't even talk about the certified pool down the street that's, that's been silted up six times in the last two years. We'll just talk about my, my wetland, my wetland. I want to know why he can't be held responsible for, for what he did to my property.
I don't have an answer for you, Bill. I don't believe that we can directly work on your pool, the commission.
It's a wetland, Charlie.
Yeah, but he's the guy that's been dumping it in there. You should be suing him.
Oh, of course, doesn't matter.
We've tried to prevent the runoff from going in. And so now it's succeeded, but it took a long time.
Oh, no, it's still running off. Last rain we got, I got, I got silt in my pond from the do-out property, but it came from the do-out property to his neighbor, ran off his neighbor's property, down into my property. Still doing it. Still doing it.
Have you been able to determine where that's coming?
No, but what, I think it may be stirring up in there as well. Do you think it's stirring up?
Well, I can't understand you, Lisa.
Do you think the silt that's in there, there's so much silt that was remaining in there that it's stirring up now when it rains?
Yeah.
Because I can't find a connection.
The, the silt that's running into my property, into my wetland, is, is coming off his neighbor's property now. Uh, his neighbor doesn't want us on there. And the reason for the wa- that the reason he doesn't want us on there is, is obvious. He won't, he doesn't want us to go on there, I, I don't understand that. You can stand on the road and you can see the silt coming off his property and he says, "You can't go on there and look to investigate where the silt is coming from." I don't understand that. Nancy tried to explain the tri- the trespass thing to me, and I'm still confused, but, uh, that, that's, uh, that's just me. If, if, if there's a violation somewhere, somebody calls me over the last 50 years that I've been on this commission and says, "There's, there's a violation going on," I walk right on the property and look at it. But this guy says, "You can't go on his property," and I wonder why he doesn't want you on his property.
Well, DEP told me the same thing.
What?
DEP told me for a situation specifically such as this, where there's no active order and there's no active project through conservation, that we should request permission from the landowner. That's because there's been case law that's proven that you have, that that's the right way to go.
So, you don't know what to do, you don't know what to tell me, Charlie. I wish, I was kinda hoping Brandon would be here tonight. But if you asked him any questions about my stuff, he would probably charge me. So... He charges pretty good. But I thought, when he came down and determined how much silt had been poured into my property between November of 2019 and November of 20, you could estimate how much silt was in there. 16 cubic feet is like, you know, you could fill a pickup truck bed. And that was the one year. And last year was worse. And last year, the Vernal Pool got, uh, silted up a half a dozen times. If you're not gonna do anything about it conservation-wise, I'm gonna have to have my attorney do, you know, figure out what we can do, uh, to get, get my property fixed up again. Get some of that silt out of my pond.
Bill, by issuing enforcement orders, we gave him notice that he had to make corrections.
You gotta speak up to him.
We may, by issuing enforcement orders, we made him make corrections to work that he was doing. He did make such corrections. And as you said, it would go from one side of the driveway to the other, to somewhere else. Water runs downhill. Yes, I, I, I'm going to say that, yeah, I think he should've loomed it and, and did a septic system sooner and seeded it, but that didn't happen. He had, he had at least 100 feet of grass and brush that hopefully would've filtered. Evidently, it didn't. But it still, water still goes downhill. I know, I was there many times, I talked with him. We got things, what we were hoping was gonna work, um...
He would always tell you what he was going to do to fix it, and you would say, "Okay," and you'd leave.
And-
And then he would, then he would try to fix it, and he didn't, he couldn't.
He did a lot of these things. He did work to correct the problem.
He didn't, Charlie.
Didn't work, though.
He didn't work.
It didn't work.
Okay.
So, if it didn't work, then what happened to your property? Our job was to, was to try to prevent a problem, but what he did didn't work. Now, what happened to your property? We cannot tell him to do anything on your property. We can't tell him to clean it, we can't tell him to pay you. This is something that becomes a civil suit for him, if you wanna call it being negligent for, if you hire a lawyer, he's gonna call it something. You know, I'll, I'll tell you, this, this has burnt me down many times, too, because I didn't like it, and I spent a lot of time, and I did not like what I saw. But yet, when we tried to get corrective action, he did something, he did work at it.
Yeah, but it didn't work, he failed every time.
It was successful, it wasn't successful.
Nope.
But he, but he still did work at it. And, and, I know Charlie's old expression, "His water runs downhill." And, and because of the steepness, yeah. Jack even got involved in, in talking about how to, how to do different trenching and how to, um, uh, put certain bales in certain ways. Didn't work.
Bottom line. He filled my wetlands.
It becomes a civil suit.
Bottom line.
It becomes a civil suit.
You think it's a civil suit? That somebody filled the wetlands and, and they should get, and they should hire a lawyer? When it, it's, it's-
I'm afraid that's my only answer.
You're the people right here to-
That's my only answer.
Protect wetlands.
Bill, I don't think we have the authority to do what you want to do. I, I'm not a lawyer. But I'm sure, pretty sure that a lawyer would tell us that he, I don't know what the story is. I don't know how to handle it. I know what you want, but can we give it to you? I don't think so. That's my point.
Okay, he filled wetlands in. You don't know how to handle filled wetlands? You've been doing it for 50 years plus.
We cannot order him to go onto your property.
Of course you can't. You can't h- h- order him to go on my property, you do what you do with the other people that filled in wetlands. You have them hi- wait, you have them hire someone to, to fix it. That's what you always do.
Offer their own property.
So, it's okay to fill wetlands on your own property, but it's, it's okay to do it on somebody else's?
Then we can issue the order to make them correct it on their own property. We cannot issue an order for him to go onto someone else's property to correct it.
So, it's okay for him to fill in a wetland?
Do you need to consult a lawyer for this law that, or what you think is the law? Do you need to consult somebody?
Well, if you start, if you start with that, Sylvia, we gotta start with a trench out front. And we gotta go down to the Vernal Pool, all of that, and then we gotta go across to your property.
But it's been for so long, and these guys aren't engineers, and you're not an engineer, and it just kept happening and happening and happening.
Bill, how long have you, how long those ponds been in?
It happened to everybody.
How long have those ponds been there?
Forty years or so.
It doesn't happen to everybody. He took every piece of dirt out of his backyard and put it in the front yard.
No, everyone of them had open ground over there.
But we did not suffer from everybody. We did not. Whatever.
Okay, if you guys don't wanna handle it, I will.
The ponds lost their function, are they still ponds?
Yeah, but they're a lot shallower than they were when he's, before he started. A lot shallower. I used to have an island in the middle of that pond, the upper pond. It's not an island anymore, you can walk right across the silt. The silt is built up over two feet in that area. You can walk right to the, walk right out onto what used to be an island. I got pictures here for you, but that, I'm, I'm sure that's not gonna do me any good. But anyway, uh, that's what Sylvia and I will have to do. Sure you can.
Is this water coming down and going into that swale and then into your pond?
Yes.
Why don't you have the town put a catch basin there?
I can't hear you.
Why don't you have the town put a catch basin there to catch the silt? And then the town would have to clean it up once a year, twice a year, whatever, when you have the problem. If it catches the, you know, that's what catch basins are made for, to catch silt. That's why they clean them once a year. That would solve the problem.
It, it would've six years ago.
Yeah.
How about all the silt that's in my pond now?
Oh, well, that's, I, I couldn't answer that, 'cause I'm not a lawyer.
I, I guess I gotta get a lawyer.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
That, to me, some kind of, you know, some kind of-
But it's downhill, Tony.
Yeah, it's still downhill, I know, but the, the, the swale is there. I know the, the pond that you're talking about, the Vernal Pond.
The Vernal Pool, yeah.
Well, but the swale is what's collecting the water and putting it into the Vernal Pool and putting it into your ponds. You put a catch basin there, I'm talking a deep one. If you put like a 10 or a 12-foot catch basin, you'd catch a lot of silt.
I don't think, on, anywhere on that hill, you can go down 10 feet, you'll, you'll hit the ledge.
Too much ledge.
But anyway, thanks for your opinion, Tony.
Just trying to help.
Makes sense. I'm done with you guys.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Excuse me, public input.
Public input, okay.
This is gonna take long, guys.
Oh, thank God.
It is, or it isn't, okay.
I know.
Joe, um, I was talking to the town administrator, and we were talking about coming up with some kind of uniformity relative to meeting agendas. So that when people look at it on the posting thing, they don't have to go through pages, they don't have to look at one and say, "I understand that one." They look at another one and say, "I don't understand that." So, I, I only have three copies, but you guys can share and put this on an agenda for future discussion. Bill will know what this looks like. This is what a stormwater, we put together colors and everything. Look at the heading and look at the layout. This is basically what most agendas in the town of Dyton look like, okay? This is a stormwater committee agenda. I made a sample of what the Conservation Commission agenda could look like, all right? You would just list the things, the stuff that you've got in front of you, those should be handed to the committee. But anyone looking at it, if you can get it on one page, this is the best thing you can do for the public, all right? So that-
So, there'd be two agendas, one, one with more information for us?
No, 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 don't say two agendas, absolutely not.
Oh, no, no, two, two, a bit of it.
There would be one agenda.
Okay.
All right, now, if you, if you look into the stormwater ones, you see how we have addresses listed? Those are all the ones that would be discussed. So, in your case, you would list just the address, all right? It says, for example, update Wellington Street, stormwater runoff, update Park Avenue, blah, 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 blah. Where those are listed, where we have active project updates, you would just reference the address. Those papers that, those would be the working papers for the committee. But you don't have to post all that, because all you do is summarize it here. So that anybody going into town hall and saying, "What's on the stormwater committee agenda?" Excuse me, all the CONCON agenda. This is what they're gonna talk about at any given time. So, I'm just suggesting you look at this. This can be modified, because you guys don't do Zoom meetings, so that would be taken out, okay? You don't do the pledge. These can be adjusted, but the main thing is, if you can get your agenda onto one sheet, on a, on a, I'll call it the CONCON letterhead.
I love it.
With all the information-
It's a great idea.
And I can send Charlie the shell. This is a sample, as I say, disregard the color, all right? The town seal will be on it. I can send him a shell. And each month, when you formulate the agenda, he's gonna look at that list. He can fill in on whether it's new business or old business, however you wanna do it. Just let the address. He still gives you those worksheets that you have, but you don't have to post that. When the public comes into that foyer, and that quad, they look wherever you, you know, everything's posted. You have your posting notice, that standard thing, that little form, you know? But this is very simple to read, all right?
That doesn't list all the items that we have on the agenda.
No, no, you're not listening to me. The list that you have there-
Yes.
For example, you, you got, let's look at this. So, if I were going to do this agenda using this format- If you look at the, you look at the stormwater, okay?
Bill, Bill-
On the active projects, it just states the address, okay? You would put, for example, Zero Horton Street, and you would put, um-
This is just the posting agenda.
Exactly. This is an agenda. You would still make this up. The information on here would just be listed as, as addresses.
Fine, good, neat.
Then, you would still prepare this, 'cause you're gonna give it to your fellow committee members, because this is the detail they need. Public doesn't need the detail.
So, that's the only document you post?
Well, they post the, the, the little tiny meeting notices, get all the lines.
Yes.
All right, and this is right with it.
That's the one that goes in the back. So, I wouldn't have to put our agenda on the back.
This is not, this is backup documents, agenda items.
Yeah, this is our agenda.
No, no, that's why I'm saying to you, we're trying to come up with a uniform agenda.
You gotta get a lawyer to sue you guys.
And what are you gonna get out of that?
This, this information is very important. But you don't have to post this for the public, because you indicate here-
I don't want him to pay anything.
And then, so that's what you post, along with a little meeting notice.
I don't want him on my property.
The template they have now is not, that's built like that. I use the template that the town-
You're talking a little-
Hand.
Yes.
That's not an agenda, that's a posting notice.
Yes, that's what this is.
No, no, this is an agenda. We put, the boards, boards, the selectmen boards, they help.
Should we still have to use the other one?
We use the small posting notice, the little, the little ones.
Yes.
And this gets posted with it. One's a posting notice and one is the detailed agenda.
I'm all for it.
So, what I can do is, I will email this to you.
Okay, can, can we close, this is, uh-
Bill, I'm just gonna give it to him, you guys can talk about it later, but he wants the show, okay? So, you can adjourn, yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, you're, uh, associate, you can't.
Yeah, Jackie, you can second it.
You're a silent pot, okay, sorry about that.
Okay, Jack, second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.